Yes, six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. As customary, we always have a word of prayer before we start our meeting. And I'll lead us in that prayer at this time. Lord, we just come to you, just thanking you for the many blessings of life that you give to us each day that we don't even realize a lot of times, and how your hand of protection has worked to protect us, and how you furnish food for us to eat, and how you furnish finances for us to live, Lord. A lot of times, we don't recognize all these things that you do for us, but, Lord, we just acknowledge that you are the Creator of all things. And, Lord, we just come to you tonight, asking for your protection upon our EMS, our fire department, and public safety, law enforcement. These guys were made special to do the job that they do. These men and women have been trained in these areas and are willing to go out and to face danger for our protection. And, Lord, we just thank you for everyone that's willing to do that, and we thank you for protecting and watching over them. Lord, just come to you tonight, just say a prayer for the Powell family, for what they're going through at this time. But we know that you are the healer, the great healer, and we know that you are the Creator, and we know that you will be with them during this time, that they're going through this struggle. And, Lord, there's others in the county that may be struggling with health issues, or finances, or whatever. Lord, we just pray that you would meet the needs, whatever they may be. And, Lord, we just pray that you would bless this nation, bless this state, and bless this county. We just thank you for each man that's represented here tonight. We thank you for the willingness to serve as a public servant, to do the best we can, to do the best for the people of Hart County. In that name, we pray, amen. Let's all stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've called to order the Hart County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, March 25th meeting. And first, I'd like to welcome each one, whether you're here in person, or whether you're watching HTC, Channel 3, or on our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. We welcome all of you. And now, we'll approve the agenda. Is there any additions?
We've got one to be taken off, under 13B. I didn't receive the information to go in the packet on that one. I informed them that we could go back at the next meeting with it. And add, in that place, if we could, I've got a call this afternoon, there's an ambulance that's come available for AAV. If somebody, like, we got the last one, somebody don't have the funds to pick it up, I'd like to place it on that, to get approval, to get it. And under C, on 13C, add the sheriff's office request for credit for experience.
And I did not get what I wanted to bring tonight, pulled together for tar and gravel roads discussion, so we'll take that off, try to get that next meeting.
So I'd leave two items on 13, the ambulance and the sheriff's request for credit.
Okay. Also, add, we got Mr. Terry Partain to add to the invited guests. Is that all right, you?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. With those amendments, can we get a motion to approve agendas?
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Teasley, we have a second.
Second.
We got a second, Michael, Mr. Brown, any other discussion?
If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this 5-0 vote.
All right, so we'll move on down to approved minutes from previous meeting, March 11th, regular minutes. Do we have, are there any additions or corrections to those?
Motion approved, 3/11/25, regular minutes.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this 5-0. All right, we'll move on down to the work session minutes, March 18th. I was not present at that meeting, so is any additions, corrections to those minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
We got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this 5-0 vote. I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I'm abstaining because I wasn't here. All right, we'll move on to remarks by invited guests, and we have Mr. Terry Partain with us tonight.
Thank you. I'll be very quick. Just mainly wanted to give one update, and then make people in the public aware of an event coming up soon. The Industrial Building Authority has been involved in several pretty major events in March, and I just wanted to, one, thank each of you guys that were able to join us or support. We appreciate the support from the Board of Commissioners, always. I know a few of you were able to attend those events. We had a great workforce, day of meetings and conferences today. We had an industry roundtable this morning that we had a great turnout at, and then we had our Archway Workforce Initiative Data Summit this afternoon. So we got great turnout at both, and I'd just like to thank again several partners in the room. We had the tax assessor's office there, Chamber of Commerce, county administrator. We had a lot of people show up this morning, and we probably had, I would say, eight to 10 industry partners show up, and about 12 resources around the region. So, very successful. Thank you to everyone who was able to attend. The next thing I have upcoming, is starting on April 9th, this is an event that is being initiated under the Poverty Task Force, which Archway facilitates here for us. We have now broken out into different subcommittees to cover different topics, such as healthcare, and childcare, housing, homelessness, and food insecurity. So they have developed a workforce subcommittee group here, that I am heading up that group. So in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, WorkSource Georgia, under Georgia Mountains, GMRC, beginning April 9th, the second Wednesdays of the month, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., we're going to host Workforce Wednesdays. It's called Skill Up and Stand Out at the Adult Learning Center. It will be held the second Wednesday of the month through the end of the year, and that's going to be targeting our unemployed, underemployed, or kind of that missing middle workforce, whether it's someone who's retired and looking to re-enter the workforce, or maybe just needs a little assistance with creating or updating resumes, exploring the local career opportunities we have, assisting with applications, as most of those are online now, so helping out with any computer skills needed, preparing for interviews, and just helping to level up their skills. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that that was happening, and we have an invitation out. I know we have flyers everywhere, from HTC to social media, so any help we could get, spreading the word for those workforce events, would be appreciated. Thank you very much. And then the only other thing I left, packets up there for you guys. Kathy Papas from DCA, the Department of Community Affairs, brought these out. The One Georgia Authority's celebrating their 25th year, and I marked pages. The second page from the back, Hart County's mentioned in there, so she asked, I gave you a copy. The folder I left for you is just the information that was put into the industry roundtable folders from this morning, so I thought you might want to see that. Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to, did anybody have any questions, I mean, while she's still here? If not, we'll move on to county administrator's report.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Now we'll move on to chairman's report. I would like to say, I apologize for not being here at the meeting, at the work session. I know there was a lot of discussion going on, and maybe from the minutes I've looked at, that there were some accomplishments made. So, matter of fact, I was here at 4:30 until I got a phone call to get my wife to the emergency room, but I just want to explain that I had a pretty good reason not to be here. But I'd just also like to say something about these gentlemen up here beside me, and Terrell, and our county attorney, that, you know, appreciate the texts that were sent, and prayers that were sent during this time. I know there's not a lot of love shown between all five of us a lot of times, but, you know, in reality, we all care about each other, and I think that's very important in today's world. And so, I just wanted to explain the reason I wasn't here. And I'll move on to District 1, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't have a lot at this time, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reiterate where Mr. Chairman said about the Powell family. They're lifelong friends, and I've known them a long time myself, a lot of years, you know, just everybody keep that in their prayers. And the only other thing is, is I run that road, sit in the center, and I wish I would be starting real soon, in a week, two weeks, or something. So I've had a lot of one or two calls on it. I don't know if the commissioners have enough, any way they're getting that underway, so we'll have it going this, this thing. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
And I tell you, all the Powell family, we'll let them know that we thinking about them, and helping them anyway, let us know. Also, I want to thank our, I appreciate the job that our public safety's doing, our county employees, and Shannon and them at the road department, I've done some work order and stuff like that, followed up on it, and they're doing a good job completing that stuff, and I appreciate what they do, and that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right. District 4, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, echoing prayers for Bobby Powell, great guy, and I know he'll pull through this, but just want him and his family to know that we're thinking about him, praying for him. Also, want to give a shout out to the Little League. They had an outstanding opening day, that they invited, you know, everybody from the community there, and it was just a great event all around, kind of brought back memories of days of past, of how opening day used to be. And just couldn't say enough about that Little League board, and what they pulled together, and then Jim and his staff at the rec, getting those facilities ready, in pristine condition. That's all I heard all day, is everybody just talking about how good the event was, and how much they enjoyed it. So, really glad that was able to come together, and look forward to seeing more of that in the future. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
Yeah, I'll start with echoing those same sentiments to the Powell family. It's not a good situation, when, you know, you've got our youth that are struggling, but definitely keep that family, your thoughts and prayers. I do have one update, and I do have one question. Out at Newburgh, at the four-way intersection, the DOT has put those additional stop signs that I met with Shane Giles, and asked that they put up on both sides of 77, that have the LED flash, so that, with that being a change in traffic, and they've got those up, as well as on Bio Church Road and Cokesbury Highway. Terrell, a quick question, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but where do we stand on ISO audit? We talked about that, and we were going to try to get somebody to come in here to do a pre-
Right. We, I had a brief discussion with John about this afternoon. He's checking, trying to get a couple of other things in order, to be sure we get, when we get somebody in here, to be sure we got enough stuff to do, back to the fore.
We just need to stay on top of that, let's make it happen.
Yep.
I met with him down in Newburgh last week, or most know, you know, he's checking out a lot of stuff down there, and he's got to get some stuff, the other pack going, and got to orchestrate all that, this one I was doing.
We're trying to attack every angle of it we can.
I understand. That's all I got.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to old business, Chapter 46, Land Development Amendment. We got it marked down for a second reading. I trust that everything that was been requested has been placed in there.
No, it hasn't. No, it hasn't. But I'm here to kind of catch you up, and kind of report where we are, if that's okay. So during the work session last Tuesday night, Mr. Dorsey did a great job outlining what the issues were, the Level 2, minimum lot size, moving to three acre. We discussed soil conditions, and I want to talk more about that tonight. That's the part that hasn't hit the draft yet, but I need some direction on that. And Mr. Hanks has got some additional information that I want to discuss with you all. Property taxes paid in current, that was in the first reading, so was the three acres in the first reading. Those were the only two things in the first reading. We talked about the fact that subdivisions on existing county roads, we first talked about they needed to be a 60-foot right-of-way, we talked about road conditions, and everybody kind of landed on, let's look at road width, that's the most important, can two cars pass 20 feet of pavement? So I'll point out in just a second, when I look back at the subdivision ordinance, it already required a 60-foot right-of-way, so I'll point, I'll point out where that is. We discussed that the applicant for the subdivision development must own the property, and that 100% of the infrastructure had to be installed before it could change ownership. If it changed ownership before the infrastructure was installed, they'd have to start over with the approval process, and it would be subject to the then-current land development standards, there would be no grandfathering. And we talked about, you know, traffic studies and environmental impact studies, and then there was conversation from the public, and then before I left, someone stopped me and said, sometimes in my development, I need to transfer to different LLCs for liability purposes, or loans, and I do sit out a lot as a real estate attorney, and so I did try to address that for you all tonight. You may or may not like what I've said, so I will just go over. Later today, I sent you a marked version through Terrell of the second reading. I'll get that to you tomorrow, sorry. So, the two things from the first reading are already included therein. On third page, county road or street, that's number 10, under the definitions of street, it already required a 60-foot right-of-way dedicated to the county. But I added, in yellow, those are the additions, and with a minimum of 20 feet of pavement width. Right underneath that, we had a definition for a subdivider, also known as a developer, and it was talking about a person who had a proprietary interest. I changed that to a full ownership interest, and the land to be subdivided. And there's, just as you make any change within this, it affects some other provisions therein, so I'll show you where that bled over into another section. So if we move over to the next page, under the Level 2 subdivision, moving up to three acres, we had a requirement in here that they hook on with the municipal water system. I did make contact with Pat Gorin at the Water Authority. He would like to at least discuss that possibility with them still, see if there's any partnership potential. He wanted us to just ask that they obtain a letter of concurrence. So I put that letter of concurrence in there. I don't know how you all feel about that, but I took out the requirement that they absolutely hook on to the system.
And if you leave that in there, it means that they can either do the well, or there's county water running down, so they could hook on that as well?
Yes. And I think Mr. Gorin would just like to explore with them the possibility of hooking on to that system. We've always questioned whether or not we can make them hook on to a system. But he did, he did want to explore any potential partnering, partnering, you know, costs and those types of things, so that they fully understood the advantages of the governmental water system. On the next page, the exemptions. I had brought to y'all's attention that one division of land into two parcels wasn't quite specific enough, so I went ahead and picked up language from the paragraph immediately below it, and just said each parcel being a sufficient size to meet the requirements of the Health Department. And for both of those, I added "and standards," so sufficient size and standards to meet the requirements of the Health Department. So not just size, but that it had full Health Department approval.
So I have a question there. So, we allow that in the next bullet point of five parcels or fewer, which we kind of tend to call that the, I can't remember what I've always called it, the estate division, basically. Now, we allow the Health Department there, to the smallest thing, but on the other lots, we have a minimum lot size of one acre.
When you all initially discussed that one division of land into two parcels, we were talking about, anybody, particularly elderly in the county, that may need to divide, may need to sell a parcel, and everybody agreed at that time, that wasn't an actual developed subdivision, and they let them do it once.
Right, I agree. I agree. But what we talked about was that that would be, we set a minimum one-acre lot size, unless it was the estate.
I think it has to be one acre to meet the Health Department, does it not?
Three-quarters of an acre.
Well, they changed that to acre.
No.
For both of those, three and four, do y'all want those minimum one acre?
I think the estate should be whatever the Health Department will allow, but I do think if, if you're going to build a house or something, you really need an acre, especially if you got a well.
Well, let's say you got an acre and three-quarter, then you got a house on one end of it there. You just got the acre, and then you own the three-quarter next over. You can resurvey that thing, throw the house on the three-quarter, and get your acre, right?
No, not if you don't have county water.
With the well thing, it falls on the three-quarters?
No, it does not. It's one acre.
I guess that's what I was looking at.
Three-quarters is if there's a municipal or county water system, or private water system.
Well, you go less than that, I guess.
No, that's not what the Board of Health set up, it's three-quarters of an acre.
So if you got an acre and three-quarters, you're getting in line with it, even with your family, unless you got county water?
That's true.
No, no, family, that's a different category.
No, it'd still be the same, three-quarters of an acre.
Still got to be in the Health Department.
Right, it's still got, it don't have to be an acre, though.
No.
Right, it could be three-quarters.
Well, there's a lot of families running off with one well. They put them on the home side, and they-
But if that were the case, and it was an estate subdivision, and you had water, you could do a three-quarter acre split. But that's only in the state, that's in bullet point four, not three. I mean, that's what we've been doing, is that not right, Terrell?
It is, and we also, Dr. Appended, they have a sign, they have a sign where they violate it, that they break them up.
Yeah, that's under North Pole. When you divide into five or more, or fewer, that is.
Are we ready to move on a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, two pages over. I highlighted in blue, procedure for approval of a plat. The pre-application review did allow a subdivider developer to come in and informally discuss this with the county administrator. I didn't see anything wrong with doing that, as long as they acquired it before the actual approval process. And so, very next section, 46-77, application for plat approval, that did require the property owner to submit that for approval. So I don't know if-
So, 46-76, to me, that should be a must. The 46-77, that's strictly talking about the plat. So at that point in time, it's already got, the plat's already been drawn, that's what you're trying to get approved there. Whereas in 46-76, that's where we're running into problems now, with all these things going on out here, and Terrell doesn't know anything about them, and all of a sudden, they all show up at one time. I think the preliminary thing, that should be a shall, where they come in and meet with him, and that way, all the stuff is laid out, it's clear, there's no, well, I got a problem halfway through this. It needs to be laid out clearly, using his checklist, and that way, everybody knows what's expected.
The only one to be actually approved would work that way.
Right.
That's where it would be.
But that's not the way the latest ones were being handled.
The last four, five, I got one.
Yeah, they just all shotgun approach.
Okay, so, but you're okay if that pre-application review is not the actual owner? They can come in and make sure that it's going to work before they buy it?
I don't think they're clear to come in and draw a problem.
I think it's got to be the owner.
You want them to buy it before they can even figure out if they can develop it?
No, I'm thinking that the owner's got to be part of the review process.
Basically, all they have to do before they buy is have the perk, kind of know parking is expensive, especially doing a lot of track.
It says, whenever the subdivision of a tract of land within the county is proposed, the subdivider slash developer is urged to consult early and informally with the county administrator and/or an administrative officer. The subdivider slash developer may submit sketch plans and data showing existing conditions within the site and in its vicinity and the proposed layout and development of the subdivision. No fees shall be charged for this pre-application review, and no formal application shall be required. I just feel like, with all this stuff going on, that this meeting needs to take place up front, and that way, it's clear, we don't have questions down there. We've had subdivisions where they didn't post a sign, as part of the requirements. That would be something that would be caught in a pre-application review.
Basically, what we'll do is, they're going to, I'll give you the check office, something's got to be done, and all, so that there's no confusion in this.
And the reason I think the owner has to be a part of this, is the developer, or who, assuming that's the same person, could have an engineer representing them, and it could be a breakdown in communication. The owner that's going to be responsible, who owns the deed, should be part of this preliminary meeting up front. That way, it's clear what the expectations are.
So you're going to say the owner and any subdivider slash developer?
That's fine. But the owner has to be a part of this.
And you want to make it mandatory, a mandatory pre-application review, and instead of urge, it shall be shall?
Yes. The reason I say that is because, and you haven't got to this yet, we talked about it the last meeting, that the approval goes with the owner, not with the dirt. This way, the owner is involved from the get-go.
Okay. And then the big change in that is on the next page, number five, to a change in ownership. This is all additional that's been added, subsequent to the work session. Prior to a change in ownership, all of the required infrastructure must be completed by the property owner. Failure to complete the infrastructure prior to a change in ownership shall render the subdivision approval null and void, and no building permit shall be issued post-change in ownership without a new application process and approval of the then-existing land development standards. of the then-existing land development standards. That may need to be a little bit clearer. The prior approval shall not be grandfathered. For purposes of this requirement, a transfer of ownership to an immediate family member, and that's also defined in that prior page on exemptions, or to an entity where the ownership thereof is the same as the applicant, is not considered a change in ownership. In these circumstances, the applicant shall provide proof that no such change in ownership has occurred throughout the infrastructure installation process. So you know, we've had some LLCs that have some shifting ownership in them. I think as long as they're showing you that the LLC is still the same ownership.
So I've got a question. We've got, we've had several subdivisions over the years that have been started, haven't been finished. We got one down Smith McGee Highway now, down at the bridge. Everybody familiar with one time back?
That's right.
They ain't done nothing there yet.
No. So, and we talked about this when we were working on the subdivision ordinance. And here's where I struggle. We don't want to see these things partially developed. And we talked about a bond when we were doing this, so that this stuff gets finished. And I don't know what the answer is. I just want, I'm opening this up for discussion. That's why I'm bringing it up.
What about a term period?
What we have here would stop that. But it could be a situation where you're halfway through, and we've got a problem. And I think we need to tie a bond in here to finish this development, hire, or whatever we have to do to get it done. I know the ownership thing is gonna be tricky, so how would we do that?
I think you checked on that, and it couldn't be done, wouldn't it? This was years ago. Bonds couldn't go with empty lots.
It's not empty lots, it's putting the infrastructure in.
Performance bond on the infrastructure.
You require it now on a road.
And that may be all the infrastructure that's required.
It's gonna, well, right now, if we go with the three-acre lots, then it takes away from the water. But if they want to put gas or any of those stuff in, that's when it would have to be. I'm not saying we need to take action on that tonight, but that's just something to think about. We don't want to have these subdivisions that are partially developed.
I was thinking, once they started the infrastructure, would they have so long to finish it? Or would the approval only be good for so long? If it hasn't started, and there's amendments to the subdivision ordinance with...
Well, if they finish it, it's a moot point, in my opinion.
No, not on that.
I can use, I think that's true. I think that's true. If they hadn't, if they hadn't finished within... Twenty-four, yeah, two years? Yeah.
What's your bite after that? They haven't finished within twenty-four months. What happens? Building permits?
Approval went away, yeah, from the Board of Commissioners. I mean, that's fair.
I don't know, this needs to be some checks and balances in here, so we don't get these subdivisions partially developed with the economy tanks, and we're stuck with it.
Well, what if we're in a situation where... I'm sorry, I don't know if it's my calling, but we're in a situation where the developer buys property, they got their roads down, everything's within compliance, et cetera, and so forth. And now it's not, we also have a, I think his ordinance senior has to have, be built out to ninety percent or something before we accept the road.
Just for the road. Right, it has nothing to do with that part where you're going. That's only the road. That's when it gets to that point.
But, you know, if somebody's only sold half of the lots...
Doesn't matter. The infrastructure's done. The infrastructure's done.
Well, I understand, but they don't have to put the last couple of pavements on that thing if they still got housing.
That's why you got a bond with a road.
Just wanna make that clear, that's all.
Wait, wait, can we go through this, and we'll let you speak, okay?
All right.
Okay, so, multiple pages over. We get back to the water system again. I just made that same change. So this would be section forty-six two twenty-eight.
D.
Four pages from the end, yes, D. It's kinda hard to see the strike through there, but I took out shall connect to, and just put shall obtain a letter of concurrence from. And then I went ahead to say any connections to that would be made in accordance with their standards and approval, which was already there. I just had to change the wording a little bit. So that was it on...
So I got a couple of questions while we're in here. So, and it mentions this in here in forty-six dash two twenty-eight D. It talks about the small development. Where we have the ten lots. We really haven't been clear in defining that, but it was my understanding when we went to the three, that the small development, which falls into a Level Two subdivision, we just need to make sure that that minimum lot size applies to that. Is everybody clear on that? So if you go back to page two, where it defines small development, ten lots...
Ten lots or less.
Yes.
About a property, no more than one small development may be allowed. Other development or division of property shall be subject to land development provisions of this ordinance.
Well, I'm assuming we was gonna leave the ten lots or less alone without this, leave it out simply because it was designed for our local builders.
We can't differentiate.
Kim, and I, and I sent this to you on the last minute, but finding with the ten lot, the one thing that bothered me was you could potentially build out a large subdivision through this loophole, if you would. Because essentially, you can make, you know, say you make a cut, do the ten lots, then you could do another ten lots, another ten lots.
Well, it goes, if you try to prevent that in that next sentence, any other developer or division of the property shall be subject to the appropriate land development provisions of this ordinance.
No more than one small development may be allowed.
That's in the definition of small development.
Second page of ordinance.
Third, third page. Top of the third page.
And, you know, the small development, that's really the only place that I found that mentions, is in the definitions, where there's, I mean, we don't really have any other criteria here on this, correct?
We just mentioned it twice about hooking up to the water system.
Technically, it falls under a Level Two subdivision, by definition. We just call it a small development because there were some things that were omitted.
Well, the small development didn't have to have curb, gutter, and storm drains, and/or either the water thing, which has gone away now. It didn't have to go to the property line, it had to go to the interest, and that was about the only difference.
That's correct. I don't remember where he is, but that's correct.
Yeah, that's the only difference it was in it. But like I said, it was designed for locals, and I'm assuming that we would leave that alone.
We can't differentiate between local and what, we can't treat people differently.
I'm not supporting whatsoever if you change it.
I'm just telling you, Kim, do you think you can defend something for local versus non-local?
I don't think it's set up that way in here. It's just small development.
Yeah, anybody can do it.
Anybody can do it. I think in...
I'm not gonna sit here and shoot at our locals.
Well, it's clear that it's being marketed as that, but I mean, it is what it is.
This thing, it's Terrell's desk, it's thirty houses, twenty-seven houses, different stuff. This ten-lot thing is ten houses and that's it. And then you got to move on somewhere else.
And the whole purpose is to try to manage this growth better.
I'm gonna talk about soils right quick, and I'll move out of your way. Mr. Chair, we had some substantial conversation about soil at the last meeting, and Mr. Hicks came up, and there are nine divisions by the Department of Revenue that are off the US soil maps. One through five are what we would consider prime farmland. Six through nine, not so great. And so what the board did was ask Mr. Hicks to generate a report or two, just letting us know what kind of parcels we had at that. So starting at twenty-five acres and above, he came up with, if I'm counting this correctly on the spreadsheet person, one thousand three hundred and ten parcels. I'm gonna explain it my way, and then you can get technical. One thousand three hundred and ten parcels total, if I counted the spreadsheet correctly. Eight hundred and twenty parcels had land productivity of one to five in those soil characteristics. Four hundred and ninety had six through nine. So that's just shy of two-thirds for prime farmland, one through five. A little more than one-third for those soils that are not so great. So the percentage being more than fifty percent of those parcels, one through five or six through ten, I was, six through nine, I probably should have said that to begin with. And so I think that you could change the number of available parcels by changing that size. We started at twenty-five. Y'all could go up to thirty and see how many, you know, I don't know. Two-thirds and one-third are good ratios for y'all. If y'all want to come closer to the fifty-fifty mark, I just need some direction on what size parcels we're talking about when you want to preserve farmland.
Have you seen it anywhere else used? Have you ever seen any?
No, sir, and I have looked.
That's why I asked.
You know, I've tried so many searches trying to find ways to manage land development standards without zoning. There's not a lot of information out there.
That would get pretty, that's actually gets pretty crazy, actually, when you think into it. Because I mean, where are you gonna find these parcels?
I think there's a huge wave to protect farmland across the United States. And so whether or not, you know, we're on that wave...
Morgan County, Madison, Georgia, they've done an extensive farm agricultural land study, and there might be some valuable information in there. I'll try to get that paper to you, and that may be something we want to do here. They tell about how many, it goes in acreage, and I don't know if it grades the farmland, but it does give us the quantity of the farmland, and it starts back in twenty twelve, or maybe two thousand and four, some of those reports, and tells how much farmland is being lost each year. And it's very informative. Let me get that to you, see if there's anything you can use out of that.
Okay.
And like I said, it may be something we want to have done here.
These are soil productivity levels, doesn't mean it's being utilized, this farmland. With these levels, are timber tracts included in that?
Hi, yes, ma'am.
Oh, I see it now, there it is.
Yeah, there's gonna be, there's certain soils that goes timber better than others, so those are graded separately as well. So it's all included in the report.
Have you ever seen anything like that, Shane, where somebody's using soil conditions to...
Not for this purpose.
Or any other purposes? I mean, I know taxation is...
Right. No, not really. There may be, there may be other states with other codes and that sort of thing, that they use it for other things, but here in the state of Georgia, I haven't seen it used for anything other.
Yeah, but it's just remarkable that they're all small parcels, what I would consider small. There are no thousand-acre tracts here, right? Maybe, maybe no five hundred. I didn't look through one by one, but you just look up on the screen and see a big representation. So we, you know, may need to study that a little bit longer, or y'all may want me to make a spat about it by the next meeting. I just want to be consistent again between all kinds of land development, and we know that we have the solar moratorium that we have to deal with.
I would say let's go on with this, and then we'll add that later. And then along with the silver, I mean, I mean, that's my opinion, I mean...
No, we just, we said we wanted to get this out, and get it out quick. That's the only thing.
Well, I mean, I know we keep coming back to the intent. The intent is supposed to be to protect agriculture. I mean, I think at some point, I mean, we have nothing in here defining the intent to protect prime farmland, or to protect our rural character. And I think we're gonna have to pivot to that as an intent and purpose of this ordinance. And I know there's kind of some varying opinions as far as the prime soil, but I do think that if we're gonna do this this way, in this manner, we're gonna have to utilize something. I think that using the USDA map of prime farmland and defining that is gonna be a good route. And it's not gonna be perfect. But, Kim, you said one of the main holdups is defining acreage to put in there? So we're gonna have to have a minimum size acreage, or minimum size tract?
It's kinda like y'all needed this information. Were we about to restrict ninety percent of the property in Hart County, which I'm sure that y'all don't want to do that? This information would help you if you wanted to see it in larger tracts than twenty-five, thirty or above, fifty or above. I'm sure Shane could handle that relatively easy.
Initially, you know, you think, well, twenty or twenty-five or above. The only problem I have is there's a lot of farmers that they piece together several little tracts. And so, you know, even maybe one continuous farmer, and then they may lease some too, but, I mean, there could be a five-acre field that's part of that operation, it's just a known different parcel.
That's true.
One question I have, and I have, I was hoping I could talk to Lily today. Is there any tie to a six or greater as far as soil condition to perk test? Right, but I'm just wondering, just with any of these classifications, if there's any problems with potential perk? That's all I'm asking, that's why. The reason I asked that for those is septic tanks, will they perk?
Lily may could add some insight in there. I think that if y'all accept that second reading with the changes, for the third reading being on the exemptions, the one division of land into two parcels, that being a minimum of one acre, and then the mandatory pre-application review process by the owner. I think that's the only major changes I heard tonight, other than we need to continue to move forward, looking at performance bonds and months of completion on the infrastructure that y'all want to include.
Can we also, Kim, look at the, back to forty-six seventy-six, can we look at this review process as a whole, and possibly look at other counties? Because I've come to find out that many other municipalities and counties have a preliminary and then a final approval. So they have a preliminary approval, then a final approval, and usually there's time in between those two. No, right now, we don't adhere to any of the same processes as what other people do.
I think that...
I brought it up about it.
That you are in final, and that you have to do it within six days, so you have, have a meeting opportunity, four opportunities within... a meeting opportunity, four opportunities within the 60-day time span to, if they're gonna deny it.
One, one other thing I think that we need to define is ownership. If somebody comes in and says it's an LLC that owns it, we need to know who the officers are of that corporation.
That's what I had stated, that they have to provide proof.
Cause there's too many LLCs out there with no information tying them to who they are.
Proof that the ownership interest is the same as the applicant, that is what I have in that member file that's in yellow.
Would you say the reason why?
That is what I have stated here.
But, but if it swaps, it'll lose the approval based on the way it's written now.
No. I have said that it's not considered a change in ownership if they're transferring...
That's right, you did say that, you did say that.
If they're transferring and they are the same.
What was the reason for switching LLCs? I don't...
There are plenty of people who buy rental property and who buy real estate, and they'll buy it and then decide to do something different with it. Everybody seems to be gravitating to LLCs now to protect them from liability. So, it can be the same principal people, they put it in an LLC, they can borrow money in that LLC. We just see it happen a lot. I just thought, does it matter, or does it matter if, if it goes from a parent to a son, or a daughter for development, as long as we know?
Well, I thought you had words in there, if they had an LLC.
I did, the ownership thereof had to be the same as the applicant.
So, it doesn't really matter, as long as they can prove ownership in the LLC, there has to be an owner in the LLC, a president or whatever.
Remember, didn't you say it could go down to family members?
I did.
That's what I thought. I think everybody who starts it ought to stay with it.
It may or may not like that, but I just thought...
I think they ought to stay with LLC, everybody who starts it till it, till the, till the infrastructure's built out. That's what I think, but I'm just one up here.
I agree with that.
I got it. For the moment.
All right. Ms. Moshe, did you have a comment?
I'm Julian Moshe. So, I just have one, one thing. So, say, so I do have currently a subdivision that I've been working on, but I've put it in three phases, which was approved with y'all, and it's just gonna take me a little bit longer than two years to get the third phase done. Hadn't started the infrastructure on that third road, but we've done all the infrastructure on the other. So, is that something that's gonna have to come back, or is that considered a work in progress? I don't wanna build something out for the third road.
If we done approved it?
Yeah.
Well, then it would be great, by the way I understand it. It just...
And going forward, would that also be the case?
The phase would have to be redone, because it hasn't been approved yet.
So, in, in future, if I come in and I've got something approved that may take three phases, is that something that I'm, and, and it may not all sell out in two years, because as a responsible developer, I want to make sure I'm putting in a road that's actually gonna be used, that there's gonna be lots sold off first, before I put the second road in. You have?
We've approved phase one.
I'm talking about future, I'm talking about as you're changing these things, right, is this something you're gonna run into?
We hadn't seen phase two with the review, right?
We've seen phase two, you have phase one and two for y'all?
Well, I come in and I, I say this, whole, whole track, right, is gonna be done in phases. So, right, and I'm gonna put a road here, and a road here, cause there's a road in the middle, and we can't do road lots, right? But I own on both sides of the road.
Would we not have to approve each phase, I mean?
I'm gonna bring the whole plaque to you, so the whole thing's gonna be...
I think that's the problem, I was trying to say about our approval process.
You get two years per phase, is the way I say it.
Per phase?
You should, came for the entire development, and then it was agreed upon that there was phases in there, and there was time limits, and there was build-out phases. Then you're not running into situations like this. Whereas now, you're just coming for phase one, then you'll come back for phase two, and that's not...
I think, no, I, I, when I bring something, I bring the whole thing, and say, this is what I'm gonna do with this piece of property. And it may take me longer than two years, because the market decides it, not me, right, when it sells.
But all you've got to do is the infrastructure. You don't have to sell anything. The infrastructure's it, that's all.
But do I have to do all three roads? Cause then that's more roads than if they don't sell.
I think you gotta do it by phases.
You have to specify the phases.
If you come in with phase two, then that's gonna be that time period, and then later on, phase three.
But then you're not gonna know what's really going on. If, if, if I were sitting in your shoes, which I don't, and I don't, won't just sit in your shoes, if somebody's gonna do something with 60 acres, it's got a road between it, I'd wanna see all three phases, instead of them coming. No, they don't have to. Absolutely, you don't have to.
How many doors you talking about?
I don't even know, I'm talking hypothetical, I'm talking about future stuff, because that's what y'all are talking about. I mean, like, literally.
So, you don't even have to draw?
No, I don't have anything, I don't have anything that I'm really truly talking about, I'm just talking about as this, as this comes at us.
My interpretation would be, it would be, the phase would be, I mean, the approval would be by phase.
Right.
And if you've got something that you wanna say, this is what I'm thinking about, to get feedback, while you, say you wanna talk about, this is what I'll possibly look at in phase three, and you've got something you wanna show it, while you're getting phase two approved, I don't think anybody has a problem with that.
I don't know, I think right now, you do have a problem, because if you got three phases, you can talk to us all you want to, come back in a year or two, and we've changed this again, and now phase two's on a whole different plan building.
Right.
That's exactly what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Cause either you're gonna have to build the road completely out with all...
And you're sitting with roads that, that aren't there, that you...
And then you gotta hope that phase one sells, then you can do phase two or three.
Right.
Which is still in, in a county's best interest to have the phases, because then you know what's coming down the pipe.
Correct. I would think so.
But in your situation, no, you're, you're going on a hope and a prayer on this, because you're either gonna have to do the whole thing, or you're gonna have to do phase two on two years from now ordinance, phase three on four years from now ordinance.
That's how I see it, like what you just said.
That's how it's gonna be here.
And I guess, and, and again, just as a, I mean, even a person living in that neighborhood, I'd wanna know what was coming, on the whole 60 acres, or whatever it is, right?
You dedicated that phase two on acre lots, and then phase one on three acre lots.
Right. 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 So, just, you know, I guess that's, that's my question, two years for the whole project, or is it, you know, like, is there, is there room that it kinda gets, if there's...
You have to do it in phases. But I kinda agree with the, the concept of coming before us with your vision of all three phases, and then nobody's shell shocked, nobody, everybody knows what's going on. And then, and then, like I said, if, if, if we see all three of these, and you're doing the phases, I mean, we even have in our ordinance, 50 doors at a time, I think.
Right.
For phases.
On all two.
Yeah, yeah. So, but by the same token, I think it would be a good idea that we have a preliminary meeting, this is the whole project right here, and there's nothing that says it can't be changed, but we need to see the whole thing.
And I think that's a great addition, I think preliminary approval is, I think that's, that's great, cause it does give feedback, and you do know what's coming. So, I think that's a good addition. The other thought that I have, for whatever it's worth, I have, you know, bought land from landowners who wanted to see their land developed, but they couldn't do it. They were older, they were, they just, it just wasn't in their wheelhouse, but they wanted to see it done. So, if they come in with developer, and work on it with developer before it sells, is that an option or not? So, the landowner is the, in your opinion? Need to be the property owner.
I don't see where that would be a problem, as long as the... I, I still say the owner is the one ultimately responsible, that's who's gonna have to get it. But if they've got, it would be just like having an engineer to come in here, or a surveyor to come in here with them, somebody who doesn't understand it, that wants to do it, that's... Well, she's not talking about buying it, she's talking about helping them to get it done.
That's where we're at now, isn't it?
Yeah, that's true.
Because a lot of people can't, dude, a landowner can't, like, I think about Ms. Gail White. So, but you can't come before, for preliminary, at all, as, unless you're landowner.
And the whole purpose, just so everybody's watching, why we're trying to do this, is to cut down on all these subdivisions being developed and sold multiple times, and just driving up the cost.
I get it, I just wanna be clear, I just, and again, speaking for landowners who couldn't do it, who are very appreciative that it's done, and enjoying driving through the neighborhoods, I just wanna put that out there.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other discussion? Back to your, Mr. Bennett, back to your deal about the less than one acre thing, when we, somewhere in this ordinance, it says a minimum of one acre lot size, and I, and I take that to cover the whole ordinance, minimum, one acre. And then it does not say in the definition of what lots size you could have, it just says, small development, with resulting in 10 lots or less. That could be three acre lots, it could be five acre lots, just as long as it's not over 10 acres.
Well, it could, but at the time, it was put in this ordinance, it was one acre lots.
That's right, because there was a minimum of one acre lot.
Right, right.
So, now we're saying that there's...
But this is example even fall under this ordinance at all? Because a subdivision is... Well, a subdivision defined is three or more, three or more lots. We're talking about if a father owns a two-acre track, or acre, three-quarter track, wanting to cut off some for their son.
No, that's a, that's a state exemption, I'm talking about the smaller...
That's what he was talking about earlier, was splitting it less than one acre for...
He did talk about that, too.
We're talking 10 houses or less.
He's talking about this right here, small development.
But on that, what you originally talked about, the, the one split for family, that, that doesn't even fall under subdivision, you know?
No, 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 that's right.
In that time, we had raised the half acre to a one acre, so I, I would, everybody would assume it's gonna be one acre. And I know what you're saying now, if we change to three acres, then everything else falls right on the three acres, regardless whether it's 10 lots or less, or whatever.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to just...
But at the time, as I stated, I said, we gotta do something for the locals, if for our local builders and developers, or whatever, and it's 10 lots or less, so we could keep it, keep the house count down, the door count down, and that was the whole purpose of it. And for the smaller developer, that don't have $5 million to go out here to put in the 30 lots, or 50 lots, or 100 lots, and if you raise them to three acre lots, you're just throwing the price of the house up. So, you're shooting down our local people, as well as affordable housing as well. I mean, we're talking about affordable housing, we adding, we adding to the price tag.
I disagree with that, because I've said many times, that residential growth is a penalty to the existing taxpayers, and it is. We're seeing the effects of that right now. There are some houses that are above the threshold, get up into 750, 800,000 dollar houses, it's not, but there are other options out there, Commissioner, where a person could go, a builder, or an individual can go and buy a piece of property from somebody who wants to sell, and I talked about this at the last meeting, if, if I had 10 acres, and I wanted to sell an acre off, or somebody would go build a house, or whatever, I could do it. It's a whole lot cheaper than going and buying a piece of property that a developer has developed, and put the infrastructure in. So, it's not, we, we've given options in this ordinance, so, and we're trying to cut down...
Not talking about the single-family house.
Let me finish, please. We're trying to cut down on the flipping of these subdivisions that are driving the cost up every time these things sell, and there's many examples out there of these things selling. And there are options out there, that doesn't mean you have to be, you have to do a subdivision.
Are you finished?
Yes, I am.
The conversation was about our local developers and builders, it wasn't about single-family housing, anybody could buy acre land, build house. But now, the conversation wasn't about that, I get your point, but the conversation was about our local people, 10 houses or less, affordable.
Any developer, builder, whatever, could go and do this, and it'd still not be a subdivision.
So, you can buy one acre at times, sell a house, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you could.
Well, I can do that as well, I'm not developing a gallery or...
There's, there's, anybody can do it, it can be divided up to three times.
Well, we designed it to begin with, we all know the points and issues that went with it, that went with it, and, I mean, if you're trying to put a...
I mean, I'm just saying that...
Get the cover on that book, or whatever now, that's fine, you can do that, but I'm using the cover that we put on the register initially.
That was in there initially to start with.
We all knew the intent of the smaller development.
All right. Any other discussion? Anyone got a question or a comment? If not, can we get a motion to take this as a second reading?
Kim, you comfortable with a second reading?
Well, the, basically, it was the soil, and what was the other?
We left the soil out.
That's right. What was the other?
We, we pull back, changing the result from what I was proposing. We added mandatory pre-application, and you do have to put that in the third reading.
That's pretty much so it.
A couple things, wasn't it?
That's, that's pretty much so it.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we said that we would work through this and take these readings, I'll go ahead and make a motion, we'll take this as a second reading with these changes.
Okay. Got a motion back to Commissioner Dorsey, have a second?
Second.
You got a second, back to Mr. Teasley, all in favor?
Opposed.
What'd you say?
I said I was opposed.
Okay. It's four to one, Mr. Bennett opposed. All right. We'll move on to bid opening for tennis, pickleball?
No.
We got manufactured homes.
Oh, I'm sorry, manufactured homes, I'm sorry.
Second reading on the other two. Nothing's changed. Let's just change the language.
Yeah, given the certified home inspector, I'll make a motion to, we take this as a second reading of the chapter 50, manufactured homes and trailers.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion back to Commissioner Brown, second back to Commissioner Dorsey, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this five of the vote. All right, now we go to bid opening, tennis, pickleball court, lighting, installation, labor.
This right here is the East System Electrical, and for them to do it is 68,000, what is that, Marshall, 500, 800?
Got a bid from Corey Clark Electric LLC, out of Claremont, Georgia, $32,000 even, make sure there's nothing supplemental, it's not, that's it.
This is from Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting Incorporated, $46,545.
You got a motion to turn these over to Terrell and Rex, or Jim Owens?
Somebody, second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Ms. Dorsey. Second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this five of the vote. All right, we'll move on to football uniforms. All right, we'll move on to, uh, football uniforms.
They're going back to tearaway jerseys this year.
That's what Marshall used to wear.
I did.
Tearaway. Couldn't catch it.
They call it flash.
Yeah.
Flash, flash, honey, go on.
Yeah, we have a cleats.
Wait a minute, what two?
I said a couple of these got the football, these one that cheer.
Oh, okay. What date was it received?
Said throw it out.
Yeah, throw it out.
I agree with that. I got, I mean, I know we've done that before.
This one will postmark on the date of use for that one.
It's out.
This is a postmark, overlap the date.
There's language in there that says, don't rely on overnight. I'll make a motion with those late bids out.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? This is five of them.
You want everyone?
What about the cheerleaders?
All right, this is football. You got cheerleaders.
One of us football, I guess, one of us cheer.
I got a bid from Go Sports on their flag football jerseys, or youth size, twenty-five dollars, adult size, twenty-five dollars. Football jerseys, youth size, thirty dollars, adult size, thirty dollars.
We got a bid from Digital Dash Creative for football jerseys. Got flag football, nine dollars and twenty cents, adult size, ten dollars, ten cents. The nine dollar and twenty was a youth, um, football jersey, youth size, twenty dollars and twenty cents, adult size, twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. List brand name Oakley Sports.
I was still looking there. This Go Sports also had the, uh, youth size pants, thirty dollars, adult size, thirty dollars.
Yeah, I'll say the same.
Like they have some more stuff back through here. They've got a lot of things.
What, what name brand, Commissioner Bennett, is that?
And the football pants for the Digital Dash Creative was twenty-four dollars and twenty cents, youth size, adult size, twenty-five dollars and seventy cents.
All right, now, those two had both bids, uh, cheerleading and-
I got the cheerleading.
Oh, you got cheerleading, okay.
This is for football from-
I'm not saying about that one.
Should have had a brand name on that.
Well, you can't read it back. I'm right.
So, what, what we run into here, and this is why some of our local bidders can't compete, is they've got their own brand names, and it's, they're being imported. I, I'd like to see this next year, and I should have brought this up whenever, before we sent this out, that we should have specified a brand, that way everybody bids on the same thing.
Yeah, is the brand stated?
I can't read. You said you read it right there.
Is that something we want to, um-
We need to do that going forward.
Do we need to initiate the brand from us as the board, or do we get that from the direct price?
You, you will pass it on to- I can't read. I told you that you can't read the right-
I say we just make a motion and let them, um, come up with a brand and let us vote on it. Because you're right. I mean, that's just going to continue to be an issue with off-brand stuff.
What is that, Jeff Brown?
I thought they'd just say it right.
I keep saying that. I'm the one that had eye surgery. On March the twentieth, we got Go Sports Warehouse.
That's Go Sports, isn't it?
All right, flag football jersey, twenty-five dollars, youth size. Which I want, the brand name?
Yeah.
Uh, Ninety Doors is what it looks like to me.
Ninety Doors.
Well, it's Go Sports, isn't it?
I'm sorry, Ninety Sports. That's what that says. Yeah, the S is made as an A, and then it looks like a D, but it's Ninety Sports.
All right.
Is that an actual brand name?
All right, we'll move on to the Digital Dash. Did anybody else have a cheerleader?
Let me see that. You got two cheerleaders, too. Each, each of them have a cheerleader.
Wait a minute, crank that, that, that's cheerleader, right there.
Put it back in there.
Where's it? Who's got the other cheerleader?
Yeah.
I had the football.
I got cheerleader. Who else got the other cheerleader?
I didn't have, I missed it. Yeah, here we go.
Okay.
I'm making a motion. That was done separately.
They're going to go to the Rec Advisor anyway.
On the cheerleader, the shell, youth size, twenty-five dollars, adult size, twenty-five dollars, and on the skirt, it's youth size, twenty-five dollars, adult size, twenty-five dollars. It's also Ninety Sports. Poms are twenty dollars per set of two poms.
All right, wait a minute, I got a little cheer. I got some to cheer about.
Okay. I saw you.
Y'all doing a fine job. One takes good thing next to find.
You got to model that, bro.
I got K-Rex Sports, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-two for the skirt, and twenty for the pom poms. Brand name.
They may put some time on this.
Augusta.
Augusta.
All right, this is cheerleader, Digital Dash Creative, uh, shell.
Two groups.
Youth size, ten nineteen, adult size, ten seventy. This is Oakley Sports. Skirt, eight ninety-five, adult size, nine forty-five. Pom poms is a dollar twenty. Prices per set of two pom poms.
So, not per pom, but per set of poms.
Per set.
How, how much was in the pom poms? Yeah, it's twenty. I might get you some.
I got a bid from Varsity Spirit Fashions and Supplies LLC out of Memphis, Tennessee. For the shell, forty-nine dollars, the skirt, twenty-nine dollars, and pom poms, twenty-six. The brand name is Varsity Spirit Fashion, which evidently is a proprietary brand. They do list the references. You get cataloged, so Frank, you can't pick him up, so.
There you go.
There you go, put it back in.
Yeah.
All right, you got a motion to turn these over to Rec Advisor.
Somebody.
Second.
Got a motion back to Mr. Teasley. Second back to Mr. Bennett. Any other discussion? All right, if not, can we call for a vote? All in favor? This is five of them. All right, now we'll go to, uh, photography.
What did you?
Go here.
Go here.
He's got, he's got eighteen involved, the commissioners in there.
Oh, yeah, I see those. Oh, yeah.
What do you want you, these short objects right here?
They haven't looked here in a few years, have they? Sports photography, let's see. You got no prices on there. Package A, twenty-four, package B, twenty-three, package C, nineteen, package D, nine.
Got one, uh, Straw, Strawbridge Solutions, um, package A, twenty-five, B, thirty, C, twenty, D, fifteen. Ten percent donation to the Rec Department. It did not determine gross or net.
I think it was thirty-eight percent. Thirty-eight percent.
All right, you got a motion to turn these over to Rec Advisor.
Sub move.
Second.
Got a motion back to Mr. Dorsey. Second back to Mr. Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five of them. All right, now we'll move on to transfer station fee verification procedures and enforcement.
Uh, basically, we, we put in the new fee schedule, uh, Monday before last. It's caused some confusion, though my phone rang a lot for several days. But the question is, the news going to get from was for the folks that don't live here all the time, that don't have us here. They don't have a local driver license. So, do y'all want to keep that up, charge them like, like the votes said, at the, at the increased price? And the second is, is we got companies that supposedly pick up inside the county, yeah, out of the county. Where I, where I set it up on the phase to start with, I took everybody we'd sent bills to and, and looked up where their home business address was. And, and the ones that was outside of Hart, where we charged them the, the a hundred and twenty dollar fee. And, and several of them called me, we pick up in Hart County. We have no idea, we have no way to prove where they pick it up at. But I got looking at the ordinance, and everybody's supposed to have a franchise with us anyway, that's to, to take businesses, to take, to take stuff to the other. And that may be one way we can kind of keep up on it. And what that franchise require, when it requires, requires them to give us the addresses they're picking up from. So, that may be an alternative to the driver's license.
I think that would work.
It'll take a while to get it, but, I mean, again, we're not ripping people off. The franchise is five dollars. We do fifty dollar worth of paperwork going, it's five dollars. That may be what we need to uphold what we already got, uh, and, and just try to focus on doing it that way, and, uh-
If you have a couple of these local trash pickups, like Westway, that kind of type of stuff.
No, no, anybody that we were sure they was picking up in the county had routes, we didn't charge them.
I understand people calling you, those people located out of town with the services.
Seneca, one was Seneca, one was, several of them were Jefferson, some of them Madison County. And they may well have a dumpster sitting here. I'm not saying they don't. It ain't been municipal trash. That's easy to figure out, garbage. Uh, it's, it's, it's the containers that just hard to figure out where they coming from.
My concern with the addresses, it would be easy to admit something outside of Hart County.
Oh, I have no way.
And, and everywhere you go, you see these trucks. I mean, they're in Franklin County. I'm not going to tell you they're in Franklin County.
Yeah.
I, I just don't see any way around it. Um, the only thing I know is that we just have to go out and audit behind them sometimes, just unexpectedly.
And we thought, and we thought about bringing a cockpit, if they doing it on a construction site, there's a permit there, or should be a permit there.
That's right.
They could bring us a permit. But on the flip side of that, everybody looking for the, for the, for the hole to go through, they'd be bringing us that same permit and hauling them everywhere else.
That's true, too.
Yeah, we must have spot checked and burned a couple of them when we catch them. Just flat line to us, man. Ain't no way, ain't no pretty way to put it. So, if that's okay, we all, we'll just stiffen up our enforcement of the ordinance and-
Yeah, just keep it away.
Or you just tighten it up, but still cover the loophole.
What would that fall under, just like, what would that fall under if, if we went out and caught them?
Oh, it goes to the master court. It falls back to the, every, every violation of our ordinance goes back to the same penalty.
I, I would want to see an affidavit executed, a sworn statement, so we can-
We can do that, too. That way we got it twice.
The addresses they're picking up.
Then they violate state law if they lie on that sworn statement, so. Okay, we'll, we'll try to get that in place. We got to do something fairly simple, because I don't, we don't have the staff out there to try to run down the address.
They got to verify ten, ten different documents, I mean.
It ain't worth it.
It's just like if you have the permit.
In other words, we, we get the franchise, we send them this franchise people, and they can check them off at the drive-thru by the sign on the side of the truck.
Well, like I said, if they doing work in Hart County, they got to come to a permit office to get a permit, right?
Right. Unless it's, unless it's like the guy, the one guy, I got a lake house up here calling me. You know, he come in and, and, and cleaned up around his house, put it in trailer, and took it out there, and he, he had a decap, can, wherever, driver's license, and they charged him the, the one twenty. And he wasn't upset. He, he was on the school board. I feel like, he's, I fully understand you, what you doing, but you're not, you kind of need to come up with a little better system about identifying people.
Well, there was a guy show up about there last week. I was out there, and, uh, of course, he told him what he had to do, so he left, come back with his sister, driver's license, work here.
Well, and this, this fellow here, uh, this, this person here understood. He said, next time I go out there, I'll have my tax bill with me, something they can receive. So, but my phone calls just slowed way down the last several days, so.
The trash hasn't slowed down from what I'm entitled. The trash actually has not slowed down.
And we still, I, I talk to Greg probably three, four times a day.
Still got issues with that.
I mean, we've been averaging about an hour and forty for, at, at the truck turnaround time at the, at the dump in Banks County from anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours turnaround time from, from that. That's not a road trip. That's just sitting in there waiting on a load, so.
We, I'm doing it. We can't have a kind, a two contracts with somebody like the, like Banks County, and so like, uh, Clark County over there. I mean, I mean, it's up Coney County.
We got the contract with the person that owns all of that. That's who I'm contracted with. It's Waste Management. They own, they own the dump in Banks County. It's their dump. They contract with the bu, with the truck driver.
I know my brother-in-law, and they use, uh, they take theirs to Walton County, but that's, um, you know, right across, um, you know, the line over there, like in O'Conne, right on the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might have to drive four, five miles.
And I don't, I don't, I don't know Walton County's got a, got a landfill or where they got a transfer, so I don't know, like, uh-
Walton County?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
You can have that, too, don't you?
They got a C and D landfill.
Yeah, C and D, that's what it is.
Yeah. So, we don't, everything, we got, got to go in that truck and go to Banks County.
I tell you what old Greg and him out there, uh, you know, I go out there like a few days a week, and, uh, you know, Greg takes his stuff to Hart.
He does.
I mean, about these trucks.
Yeah, like I said, I, I, he called, he called or text me three or four times a day.
And, and I know it's frustrating for him, because, you know, he wants to stay in a smooth, smooth operation. And we got them other guys out there, uh, old Mike Powell and Joey and them out there, and, you know, all them guys, uh, you know, want things to be smooth and working right out there.
I was going to say, big Greg running a lot of stepping in and second look.
Oh, yeah. Well, everybody, I mean, yeah, Greg does, he, he does most of the pickups of, 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 yeah, everybody out there works. I'm not-
I've seen a brush going in.
Going back to the commercial pickup stuff with the franchise fee, and I don't know. I know we're going to be having some folks' challenges on this, and people are going to be picking up stuff outside Hart County, but I think we need, we need to have them give us a route.
Yeah, that's part of the orders.
They're going to pick up each day, each day, and us have a tag number of the truck that's going to be picking it up, so we know that this is part of it. And they need to understand if we catch them, that we are going to prosecute them in the master court.
Yeah, well, it's, it's in the ordinance. They have to, they have to give us the route, and, and they're-
But they don't have to give us the tag number of the truck.
No, they don't. They don't have to give us the tag number.
And that's something we need, so we know where that truck's going.
Yeah. And we, we may have to redo our, our paperwork on that, but.
All right.
Uh, that's all I got on that. I don't think it needs any, unless you want to change it, don't need any action.
All right. Next thing is, uh, about the, uh, ambulance that-
Got a call from, uh, AEV this afternoon. They've got another truck that they built for somebody else, and now they financially can't get it. That's the way we bought the last one.
We, we got, we got the money to get it.
Oh, yeah, we got the money.
I make a motion.
We're prepared.
Well, let me tell you how much it is for you. Hold on a minute.
Two, huh, okay, go ahead.
We got to have it.
It's two, two hundred, it's a F four fifty, uh, it's in between the yellow ones and the other ones I just said, uh, like, uh, again, AEV built what we got. Tw- uh, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred. And, uh, F three fifty is about two thirty-five, so it's not that much difference in price.
Is there a state contract price on that?
Yeah, that is.
There is state, because that way we can-
Yeah, you can buy it under, you can buy it under emergency situations.
Right, that's where I was going.
Since we got them ordered under state contract and can't get them.
That's where I was going, just so everybody knows.
We ain't got a VIN number, I mean, it's just-
I mean, state law requires.
Yes, yeah.
Bid it out for us over a hundred thousand, but in this case, I think we have brands.
Yeah, it's an emergency situation.
I make a motion, we purchase it. Second. You got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
As far as the new ones, I mean, we're still back order on new ones.
We got one, I've had the VIN number on for two and a half years. I haven't got the truck yet.
So, there's still a, just supply issue with them, and it's the-
The supply, and I think probably workforce issue.
It's going to get worse, too.
Uh, supply is one thing, but see, when, when the supply went away, AEV was the largest employer in that town, up to three hundred and fifty or so employees. Well, I mean, they had to lay people off, but they couldn't do that. And I think now, it's, it's like everybody else is trying to get enough staff, getting turned out, uh, quality turned out.
Tell them we got an industrial park. They can come manufacturing things up here. Tell them we got an industrial park, they can come manufacturing things up here.
That plant's bigger than both our industrial parks put together.
We find them somewhere, as long as they give us some ambulance, we just need.
I've been up there many times.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I think we, we should have in the motion that this is an emergency purchase. That way we, we're recognizing the law.
How many in my motion say this is emergency purchase for emergency vehicles, uh, ambulance, uh, two hundred and forty-nine thousand?
Five hundred.
She's right, okay.
I second that motion.
All right, we got a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, call for a vote, all in favor, this is five oh vote. Uh, next is Sheriff.
Yeah, Sheriff Carroll's hired a deputy, Victoria, nun. Uh, she's wanting to give her four years of experience, and she's had more than that, I happen to know her, she's had more than four years, these requests, and four years of.
Make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey to approve.
Make it retroactive to her hire date if she.
She's retired, I know, this is her first, first week.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Dorsey to approve this request from Sheriff Carroll, second by Commissioner, who's you, which one you have?
I don't know, you don't flip a coin?
Teasley. All right, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this is five oh vote. Uh, do we have any executive session material?
Yeah.
Okay, we did.
Real estate.
Okay. All right, can we get a motion going to executive session, litigation personnel, real estate?
You gonna do public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, anybody wanna say anything? Yeah, that, 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 yeah.
I figured that would be the time to get it, really, people.
I didn't wrote over public comment, uh, anyway.
I'll give you a second on the other motion.
Who made the motion?
You did.
What about?
To Jerry, to the executive session.
No, I said, can we get a motion?
I gave you a motion.
Okay.
I thought you did.
Uh, we got a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion to go into executive session, litigation personnel, real estate, and second by Commissioner Brown, all in favor, this is five oh vote.